Good evening. I now call the special meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Leading our invocation this evening will be Commissioner Gary Roberts, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'll go ahead and conduct that. Would you please stand, please?
Father, thank us for this gathering, and may this may be a blessing to all of us, and thank you for the time and effort you give us to do the work you call us to do, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, we should, under God, end the physical, for liberty and justice for all.
Can we get a roll call vote? A roll call, please.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Here.
Commissioner Musara?
Here.
Commissioner Roberts?
Here.
Commissioner Laney?
Here.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Here.
And Chairperson Surtur?
Here.
Item number five is approval minutes. All minutes with this meeting and the last meeting will be approved at our meeting on February 8th. Any announcements from staff? All right, moving on. We have no public hearing items. We'll move on to item number eight, which is Final Development Plan 20-017, upon the application of Espire AZ LLC, a request for a review of the Final Development Plan for development and operation of the Espire Sports Center and RV Resort Facility. The project comprises the following: an approximately 59,619 square-foot two-story building, which will include 10 indoor pickleball courts, multiple-purpose sport court, golf simulators, pro shop, locker rooms, restaurant and bar, private lounge, billiards, fitness rooms, gym, massage rooms, conference rooms, as well as an outdoor patio and balcony; a 4,078 square-foot outdoor game yard; 14 outdoor pickleball courts, 10 of which are covered; 78 RV spaces, including amenities; 30 550-square-foot rental casitas; and 12 650-square-foot rental cottages. The proposal is located on 13.7 acres, located on the northeast corner of Florentine Road and Lake Valley Road. Eric, take it away.
Thank you, Chair, members of the Commission. As you have stated, the project is located, this is the general location, the vicinity map relative to the town limits. Here is a closer-up location on the corner of Lake Valley Road and Florentine, close to the Gavypie Regional Medical Center. The site is Zone C2PAD. The C2PAD zoning allows for this type of use in that area. Here is the overall site plan for the project. As you've stated in the opening, that there's casitas, rental casitas, rental cottages, as well as the main building. There's also 78 RV units with a clubhouse and other amenities that the group is looking to plan. The parking is adequate to town standards, and there's two potential, there's one full access onto Lake Valley Road with an emergency access located north, as you look kind of along Lake Valley Road. So the main access is controlling access into the overall site, which would be controlled for patrons of the Espire Sports Center, as well as RV patrons, and those using the casitas and the cottages. Here's the overall landscape plan of the site. The landscape plan meets the town requirements. One item that has come up kind of through discussions with, overall through staff and others, is the way that the site's kind of laid out, specifically with fencing. Overall, the fencing is, the entire site is fenced in with areas in and around other areas that are landscaped. They're looking at both split-faced CMU, as you see over there, kind of on the northeastern portion of the overall project, and then with wrought iron kind of going around the casitas, as well as around the RV. One of the reasons due to the wrought iron was they have enhanced landscaping, while it meets the town requirements, it actually exceeds the town requirements. So overall, the way that they're controlling access into and out of the site is through the fencing. So there's no pedestrian access in, besides that of coming in off of Lake Valley Road at their major access point, and there is the emergency access that will have a gate in case of some kind of emergency on Lake Valley Road where either fire EMS or what have you need to access that. So overall, the entire site is contained within that site, to not allow residents or visitors out of the site unless they're coming through the main access point. Here are the overall elevations. These are, and that was for the main building, the casita elevations, including courtyard, and the cottage elevations. The cottage elevations open up into some of the pickleball area, and they're a little bit larger than the casitas. This is the elevations potentially for the clubhouse. As you're aware, the preliminary development plan was approved by the Commission in September of this year. In October, we brought it back, and one of the items that was added is that the final development plan comes in for a recommendation to the Planning and Zoning Commission. So as part of the overall recommendations by staff, we moved to recommend approval to the, or we recommend that the Commission recommend approval to the Marion Town Council, subject to stipulations 1 through 12. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those. There's also, the applicant has a presentation that if you were still willing to, they would like to give as well. With that said, I'll open it up to the Commission.
Okay. Thank you, Eric. Any questions of staff from the Commission?
Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to ask staff, what were the qualifications or the characteristics that you considered in determining that this was in keeping with the character of the neighborhood?
Chair, Commissioner, overall, when we looked at the development plan, the main thing that we look at is making sure that the zoning fits the overall development, the zoning fits the proposal. In this case, the C2PAD zoning allows for both the RV park, as well as the RV, or the pickleball, and the other facilities associated with the major building on the site.
So you looked at, technically, it is allowable in that zone, and that's about it?
Chair, Commissioner, that is correct. That is, one of the things that we look at, is making sure that the zoning fits the proposals. And in this case, those zoning, the zoning does allow for these types of uses in that zoning designation.
Thank you.
I do have a question, Eric. On the site plan, overall site plan, and you showed the fence, it says there's a future connection to hospital. Can you address that, or do I need to have, do we need to have the applicant up here to do that?
I'll probably have the applicant address that. So is that, Commissioner, is that specifically on the site plan?
I see it there. It says future connection to hospital through...
Yeah, at this time, my understanding is that they're not, they're not looking at a future connection to the hospital.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions of staff?
Yeah, it almost looks like a sidewalk rather than a driveway, the size of it.
Yeah, and that's, and of course, you know, they were just discussing the sterile, you know, environment, so that's why I wanted to ask on that. Mr. Laney?
You make a special point of talking about how this whole project is self-enclosed, and that people inside will not be going out much, but what about people coming in from the outside?
Chair, Commissioner, so the main, the reason that they have the one access point is to control access within the site, so that only patrons are using that site.
What about pedestrian?
Chair, Commissioner, there is pedestrian access. There's sidewalks required as part of their development plan along Lake Valley Road. So if a person in another area of town, such that they're attending something at the Toyota Center, they could walk over to it. However, you know, it's, for the most part, this is going to be accessed via vehicular. But there is availability of accessing in pedestrian.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Okay, thank you, Eric. I'll definitely, at this time, invite the applicant up.
My name is Peg Travers. I'm responsible for marketing of this project, and also, I've been very much involved in talking to all of our potential partners in the city of Prescott, in the town of Prescott Valley. But first, I want to say thank you for coming in tonight for this special meeting. I know your time is precious, and we appreciate your time. So, do you want me to go through a brief presentation, or would you like to ask questions, and I'll try to respond to them? What's your preference?
Hey, I mean, if this is the same presentation you wanted to show at the last meeting when we had the procedural vote, definitely, I would like to see the presentation, so...
Excellent.
And I think definitely for the public, let's definitely, go ahead and show it.
Okay. So I'll be happy to. Over the last few months, since the last time we met, we appreciate the feedback that we got from you, and we've been very busy reaching out to all of our potential partners, to the school, and to the superintendent, and to our police chief, and all of the other neighbors in the area. So, a lot of the information that we have to provide for you is based on that feedback. So eat, stay, play is the concept. You've seen what the building is going to look like, and what I'd like to say about the building is, it struck me when I came into your public buildings here, how consistent the architectural design of this building and the complex is, and how nicely it fits in with the rest of the area. So, one thing I did want to point out, there had been some concern that we had heard, and we want to make sure we address that. If you look at this outline here, that is our, the outline of the property that we have there. Can I, is there a way to? Okay, I just wanted to, if you see the red arrow there, that's where the entrance is, and the entrance is directly across from the event center. The emergency entrance is on the far right-hand side, and as you can see, Lake Valley School is directly across. So when we did go to speak to Principal Deckerson, we went over all of this information with her as well. Let's back up a little bit. Can I back up? Can you back it up? Okay. No issue. Okay. So that's what it looks like. As you can see, the building in blue is on the far left-hand side, the corner of Florentine and Lake Valley. This perimeter, with the wrought iron fence, is where we're going to install a highly effective security system. So the security cameras, it's very important to us to have safety for the community and for anyone staying at the facility. So we are going to have cameras focused out and focused in, and there will be state-of-the-art monitoring at our central system, at the reception desk, so that people will be able to visualize what's going on at all times in the park. So we'll have this state-of-the-art monitoring system with employee training and protocols as well. We've also spoken to Prescott Valley Police, and Chief, the chief was very interested in providing us with some information, and he was also interested in being, participating in the training of our employees, so that if we do see any untoward activity, both inside or outside the facility, that we would have a protocol to be able to get in touch with him. We're going to have background checks for our employees, and as you probably looked at the packet, we've got our CCNRs that are quite stringent, and are, anyone that's staying at the motocross, will obviously be providing us with detailed information, so we'll be able to track anyone, whether it be a motocross or someone staying at the casitas as well. We've gotten some questions from people, because there was some misconception that this was going to be a facility for people to come into from outside of Prescott Valley. And we want to make sure that you all know that this is going to be a family-friendly facility for the residents of Prescott, Prescott Valley as well, and that we'll be open to the public, so we're all going to be hoping that everyone in Prescott Valley will be visiting Espire. So we'll make sure that our monthly fees, if you decided you wanted to play pickleball or become a part of the league or whatever, will be very, very reasonable. And the residents will have access to world-class activities. I have been working very closely with other pickleball groups across the country, and we've already got people begging us for events, camps, and training facilities for people to come into from all over, and I have gotten calls from people from Prescott Valley as well. When are you opening? When are you opening? So we're going to have clinics and tournaments and leagues. In speaking to your superintendent, Podhast, he was very interested with the conference space that we're going to have. Apparently, there's a great lack of conference space in Prescott Valley, so we're going to make sure that that space is also available to you. So we plan to be working with all of your local, the boys' club, the event center, the, anybody that wants to come in. We've also met with the Chamber of Commerce, and we're looking to become very much an integral part of the community, and have events that would be wonderful, that we can provide for all of the residents in Prescott Valley. 20,000 square feet, so that's pretty significant. I know that Principal Deckerson had said that that looks very appealing to her, because they don't have any place to hold their meetings, and so that would be a nice, a nice plus for them. The economic impact of this project, which we've already made a significant investment in, in particular, in Prescott Valley, is huge. So if you look at the economic impact, $15 million to Prescott Valley, and $75 million over five years, 130 jobs, these are all, we've been told, very conservative numbers. 130 jobs for the residents of Prescott Valley would be pretty significant, and they're not all entry-level jobs as well. We're going to have a significant number of people visiting this facility, and taking advantage of all of the wonderful things that are in Prescott Valley and also in the surrounding area. We expect to have, one of the partners for our project runs a travel service, and he has people visiting from 42 different countries, some from Japan, so he's hoping to be able to bring these people to Prescott Valley for events, for clinics, and tournaments as well. So, of course, there'd be a significant economic impact for your construction, 17 million, and state tax revenue, which goes towards your community, and obviously, your 2% surcharge for Prescott Valley, 56,000. We are extremely excited and anxious to get started on this. It's been a bit of a delay here, and we're hoping that you see the vision that we see, and we hope to be able to become not a good partner for Prescott Valley, but an excellent partner for Prescott Valley. We hope to be very much a part of this community. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions, any applicant?
Yes, sir. Mr. Roberts?
I want to know, what is your construction, what is your construction plan if it's approved?
Construction plan, as soon as we get the permits, I think we have a loader waiting to move soil. I mean, we are ready to go. Actually, we have a gentleman here that's going to be part of the construction, my other half. And you need to understand that we're all locals, so we're right here, and these jobs are locals. We're not going to be bringing in some big construction company. We're here, and we're the ones that are going to want to do it. So yeah, we're ready to go. We're waiting, and we had hoped to start in January. We're hoping, our goal is maybe by April? That's aggressive, I know.
I have two things for you. With on the site plan, you have the future connection to the hospital, and I also saw it on your landscape plan. Is that, are you still planning that? Are you taking that out to keep more of a sterile environment with the, within the...
Do you want me to speak to that, or do you want to? Let Jim Thomas speak to that.
Sure.
He's met with your hospital.
It's just a pathway, and the hospital actually requested it so that they could come use the restaurant, doctors and nurses and stuff, they could come over for lunch. It's just a pathway.
Okay. But it is a sidewalk, though, to...
It's a sidewalk.
Okay. All right. And the second thing I had is that, and I, first of all, I want to say, appreciate you meeting with the school and the hospital, your neighbors, and I appreciate you doing that. When you met with the school, did you mention, or was any concession made to move the window level up on the casitas that were facing Lake Valley and facing the school in particular?
Yes, we did discuss that, and the windows will be high up, also because those are bedrooms, I think, facing that direction, so we don't want people looking in. So the windows are high for that reason.
Would you have any problem adding that as a stipulation? So, high windows, anything that you did, you agreed to at the school, so in particular, added security cameras, the background checks, and the window levels? Would you have any issues with that?
Not at all.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions of the applicant? Seeing none, I'll invite you guys back.
I just wanted to add that, you know, we think that this is probably one of the nicest things that can happen to the entertainment district, the addition of this sports facility, and it truly is, we hope to bring in a five-star resort, that people will come from around the country to visit Prescott Valley, and we're very excited to come to this town. So, thank you.
And I appreciate you guys coming out this evening as well, and doing this presentation.
Our pleasure.
At this time, I'll open the floor to public comments. Is there anyone wishing to address the Commission on this issue? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Commission. Any additional comments or, and/or motion?
Just one. I was happy with the, in the paperwork that we received, the, you mentioned it before, CCNRs, for lack of better, for the type of vehicles that will be allowed in. I think that that was a question the last couple of times that we met, and I thought the clarity of what you did there was done extremely well, so I do appreciate that. Thank you.
Sure. Come on up, Liz. Go ahead and state your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Liz Kennedy, and my one concern is the impact of the school and the RVs. When the kids come out of school, there's buses and cars and everything. How's all the traffic going to be managed?
Okay. Definitely have the, Eric, do you want to get that, or do you want the applicant to get that?
Chair, members of the Commission, so they did provide a traffic impact analysis, and based on that traffic impact analysis, we don't see that the times that the school is coming in and leaning out versus the busier times of day for the Espire Center are not going to have conflicts in that way.
Okay. Appreciate that. Thank you, Eric. Any other comments from the Commission and/or motion?
Chairman, perhaps I missed something, but it seemed to me that what have been referred to as CCNRs are actually rules that can be amended at any time without notice, and that there is no legal requirement about the quality of the RVs that go in there. That was a little bit of a concern with me. I know it says the development, one of our stipulations is that it's according to what has been presented, but that leaves quite a bit of room in the joints for interpretation.
Okay. Would the applicant like to address that?
So, I'm not exactly sure. Our clientele are, these rigs are very expensive, you know, they're, and they have to be within, I don't know what the, I think it's within 15 years or 20 years new. They have to look nice. These are, these are expensive rigs that are going to come in. We don't, we won't accept anything that wouldn't look nice. The other thing to know is that it's $75 a night to stay at this place, in the RV resorts. So I don't think you're going to have anybody coming in that, you know, has an inexpensive RV, if you know what I mean. It's very expensive to stay there.
My only concern is a what-if.
What-if?
What-if. What if your development languishes for a while? Your standards are simply rules that you can change.
CCNRs, right.
CCNRs are recorded. These don't appear to be recorded requirements.
Well, I'd be happy to record them and make it a requirement. I'm happy to do that.
That goes with the land.
Sure. Happy to do it.
Concern goes away.
We have the same concerns that you guys do, and we want it to be a five-star resort.
So, Commissioner Rutherford, are you okay with adding that as, applicant as well, adding that as another stipulation?
I am.
Okay. Mr. Laney?
My concern is, how are you going to be vetting the overnighters, or the two or three or four days of these very expensive vehicles that are going to be there? How are you going to vet the owners of these vehicles?
You know, I think it's the same way that a hotel does. I think it's the exact same, you know, we will have their, you know, their license and everything on record. We will have people on-site from, you know, 6:00 AM to 2:00 AM, so, you know, we're going to be on property, and I think we vet them the same way a hotel would.
Okay.
But I, I mean, I will say, our clientele are, these are, these are retired people that are usually over the age of 60, that are, they're, they're on a vacation. So they're, they're coming to have fun and play, you know, a healthy sport, and so that's our clientele. They're, they're, you know, older people that are, that have money, so...
Any other questions of the applicant or staff from the Commission?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Any other comments from the Commission itself? Okay. Seeing none. Is there a motion to approve Final Development Plan 20-017 with stipulations 1 through 12 as presented in the packet, and then added stipulation 13 and 14? 13 specifically, the concessions that were made to the school with regard to added security cameras, background checks, and the window, get this correct, window, moving the window level height up, and then stipulation 14, recording the CCNRs?
I'll recommend approval of FDP 20-017 with the stipulations 1 through 14.
Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Yes.
Commissioner Musara?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Laney?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Yes.
And Chairperson Zercher?
This time, we'll open the floor to call the public. Consideration of discussion of comments from the public, those wishing to address the Planning and Zoning Commission, need not permission, excuse me, need not request permission in advance. Action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, or rescheduling the matter for further consideration, and decision at a later date. Is there anyone wishing to address the Commission? Seeing none, we'll move to item number 10. Is there a motion to adjourn?
If we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye.